All right, let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'd like to apologize for the late start. We did take a couple of pictures with the oldest living fire department member and the two current fire chiefs in the city council with our new fire chief's emergency vehicle. So, apologize, it took a little longer than we had anticipated. We were waiting for Councilmember Henry to come out, but it never occurred. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe and a second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any resident comments and/or questions for any items not already on the agenda? Bueller? If not, no, I'm kidding. Let's move on to reports only. Eastern Carver County Schools. Mr. Ford, please address. Welcome aboard. How long have you been in your position as the director, excuse me, the advancement director of Eastern Carver County Schools?
Since March 1st.
March 1st of last year.
This year.
This year.
Yep.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you. No, the, it's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, Council. I'm Rick Ford, the advancement director for Eastern Carver County Schools and also the executive director for the District 112 Foundation. And the District 112 Foundation is a nonprofit organization, separate from the school district, with an independent board of directors who reside in all four cities within the district.
Who represents Carver?
We have two, Philip Solcing and Mike Fahey.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I have a question for everyone in the room. Did anyone in this room attend public school in this district, District 112?
Yep. Larry still is. Did anyone get kicked out of this school district in?
How many graduated from the school district? We have one hand, okay. And then how many have children currently, or have had children, in the district? And how many have grandchildren?
Old.
How? How many great-grandchildren? Okay, none.
How many great-great?
Great-great. Okay, so I've got a question for everyone. The first graduating class in Chaska High School was 1906, which makes us 112 years old. 112. And that's unique and significant because this is Public School District 112, and we're 112 years old.
Ah, I see what you did there.
Mike, you are so smart.
I got it.
So, for the first time in the district's 112 years, the foundation will sponsor a charitable direct mail giving campaign. You will be getting your mail the second week of November, so that's coming up pretty quick, and it'll be the first time in 112 years that every household in Victoria, Carver, Chanhassen, and Chaska will have received a direct mail request from the 112 Foundation to support our students. So, we have a lot of time to make up, don't you think? 112 years. The foundation's goals include supporting student activities, reducing students' economic insecurities, we're building an alumni association, and creating an endowment fund. And I tell my alumni association members, board members, that they are the best alumni association members we've had ever. And they say, "We are the only alumni association members."
One and the same.
One and the same. So, in your packet, you have cards of what student activities that we're supporting, reducing students' economic insecurities. So, that's food. We have the backpack food program. That means kids on Friday then have food they can take home for the weekend because they don't have food to eat. And then we realized if they don't have food to eat on the weekend when they're going to school, what are they doing during the summer? So, we also have a program of supplying food for those kids during the summer. We also have fees that we pay for kids who get involved with competitions. So, it might be debate, it might be robotics, it might be speech. And with those competitions, a lot of times, they have to travel. And so, we will pay the traveling costs and also the fees to compete, so that those kids don't have to stay behind. We've got STEM robotics. Robotics, in fact, we have a, we had a private individual who, and I think, Mike, you know who this is, but I won't say who it is, but this person supported the robotics. He started the robotics program in both Chanhassen and Chaska high schools. And now, more support has been able to come in to support those programs. I went to the robotics competition this year at the University of Minnesota. It was so much fun. I just could not believe. And these kids, they're really cool because they are working on the robotics, and they've got this competition, and one of the robots went down. They had to figure out what it was. So, they all go around in a circle, around the robot, and they're all talking very calmly, casually about, "This is what we have to do," and they put it all together. They took it out, and then they competed with it. And I didn't realize that in the competition, not only is it about robotics, but it's about keeping an eye on the other teams that are out there, because then they have to, there's a part of the competition, they have to pull another team in, and then they compete together. So, I thought that was a pretty cool part of it. We also do the Teacher of the Year. So, for the 11 years, we've been presenting $5,000 for the Teacher of the Year, $3,000 to the recipient, and then $500 to each of the nominees. And that's from every building in the district that has been a part of that. So, if you look at the public school foundations surrounding our district, they bring in between $100,000 and $800,000 a year. So, I'm thinking, "Why not us? Why can't we do that?" So, I have a request of you, everyone in the room. $112. If you're financially able, please make a gift of $112 this November in the direct mail to District 112 Foundation. And it's easy to remember, 112 for 112. So, watch your mailboxes, and for more information on how to support your district, 112 Foundation, this is a newsletter, or the newsletter that's going to be a part of it. So, when you pull it out, it's going to look like this. And then, we've got Teacher of the Year on the bottom. We have all the teacher grant recipients here. We've got the board members included on this. And then, we've got the different initiatives that we're also a part of. And we do thank you for being a part of this.
Appreciate the effort. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you're talking about the food security.
Yeah.
And improving that, do you have that available at all of the schools in the district?
Correct. So, you could even, you could specifically say, "I want this to go to this particular building." So, there are kids from every building in the school district.
And I'm sure you don't have this detail off the top of your head, but do you have any idea what maybe, like, what percentage of kids might have to go through this program?
Well, you have, first of all, you've got Free and Reduced, which is about 20% of all the kids. And so, that really means that all of these kids are eligible, but I think about 200 right now are on the backpack program.
Okay, thank you.
And that's getting food for the weekend and?
Right, that's for the weekend, yep, yep. But we'd like to improve, increase on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Rick.
Appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your efforts. If there's no further questions, let's move on to Mary Hersberger, Carver County WeCab. And thank you for sticking with this. It's a great program. I love it.
Well, good evening, the Mayor, City Council, and to your staff. First of all, I want to thank the City of Carver. I want, you already know what a good staff you have, but I do want to compliment Vicki. I can call her almost any time, and she gives me an answer, tells me where to show up, what the, where the key is. I mean, whatever I want. So, I mean, it, thank you so much.
You know, it's interesting, Victoria keeps recruiting her, and we say no.
Anyway, thank you very, very much for your support. I'm here to talk just a moment about WeCab. I think you all have some information in your packet. First of all, all of the statistics. I won't bore you this year by going through them all. As you can see, in Carver County, we started in 2014, so we're beginning our fourth year. Our fiscal year just ended at the end of September. During that time, we have served Victoria, Chaska, Carver, and Chanhassen. And almost a month ago, a little more than a month ago, we've expanded to Watertown, Mayor, and New Germany. So, we're expanding. And I'm pleased to say that in about two weeks, I'll be making about my third visit to Waconia. And they just called and said, "We've heard about this WeCab program. We really want to get going on this now." So, it's really a program that is serving people who do not have transportation. And although here in Carver County, it's easy for us to say there can't be that many people that need transportation in Carver County. I mean, after all, we have Southwest Transit, we have Smart Link, and all that's very true. And in fact, Southwest Transit is a supporter of WeCab. And the reason Southwest Transit supports WeCab is because there are so many people that can't use the buses, they can't use the public transportation system. It might be because they're scared, they have a brain injury, they need to go to the University of Minnesota for chemo treatments. It might also be because they have a DWI, and they're afraid to let people know it, and they just want to get their license back, and in the meantime. The latest story, I always have a story to tell.
Yes, you do.
This is my, this is, I always have short stories, though. So, I had a woman call when I was dispatching on Friday, and she said, "I know it's late." She said, "But I need to go to St. John's Lutheran Church tomorrow, Saturday." And I said, "Okay." And we don't make any kind of judgment, so I thought, "What are they going to church on Saturday for?" And she said, and she volunteered. She said, "I have three girls, and I need jackets." And so, I said, "Well," I said, "we'll put the ride in." And as you know, rider, we depend on volunteers. So, we have to make sure that a volunteer will pick it up. But I'll watch this ride today. And lo and behold, a driver picked it up, and the driver got back to me, I think I got the email this morning or yesterday, and said, "Got the woman to St. John's Lutheran Church, and she found the three coats for her three daughters." So, those are the kinds of things that WeCab gets involved, and it's, so it's really a heartwarming experience, too. One of the things that we always need to keep our computer programs going, to pay drivers who do put in for mileage, and for all the other things, printing, great things like statistics, brochures, is, well, our funds. And so, I want to thank Carver for contributing $1,000 last year, and I hope that we can count on you for another $1,000. Every little bit helps, and we're very judicious on spending. Sometimes I ask people, when they ask me, "Well, Mary, do you think we should spend this?" And I'm like, "Well, of course, what are you talking about that?" But everybody's very careful when we spend money, it's a nonprofit, and so we don't just spend it away. So, I don't think I have anything else to add. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mary? Any comments?
I was just wondering, in the packet, there's some information about how many rides and where they originate from. Do you know how many rides you give to Carver, folks from Carver?
Carver is still, we have a number of volunteers in Carver. In fact, one of our best dispatchers is from Carver. And we don't have a lot of rides here, but we have a number of rides where our drivers come over. For instance, in this, an area right up there where there are a number of people that go to Chanhassen, to the Counseling Center from Carver. We also have some people that go to the hospital, you know, and the 212 Center, but I don't have the break, I don't have a breakdown for Carver. We don't really keep track. We keep track about where we're going and why we're going, medical, social, grocery, food shelf. We take a lot of people to the food shelf.
Thank you.
Well, I've seen the results of this, and I've seen the service that you provide, and you hit a segment of the population that is sometimes missed by the others. While, I love that you actually make note of Smart Link, Southwest Transit, Southwest Prime. That's part of what your literature states. And you certainly do hit a segment that is needed. So, I am very much appreciated, appreciative of the service. And I just highly recommend that you don't let Wygant drive anymore. He's not a good driver.
Well, you know what? I'm waiting for him to really sign up to be a volunteer driver.
I thought he was driving.
I think he's telling you a story, because I?
Uh-oh. Well, you know what? Let's call him out right now, Mr. Wygant. I dare you to volunteer at WeCab. I'm calling him out right there, Jim Wygant. I thought for sure he did. You know, I'm careful what you wish for.
Well, you know what?
You have insurance?
You did bring up, you did bring up something that I neglected to say. One of the things that we are always looking for.
Always need drivers.
Volunteers, dispatchers, and drivers. And you can choose when you work. It's the greatest volunteer. If you can't work, or you can't do this, or you can't take a ride, that's okay. Nobody calls you up and says, "Why haven't you taken a ride?"
Yeah, we need you to do more.
So, but, you know, we do need volunteers.
Mary, if somebody's listening tonight and they want to volunteer, how do they contact?
All they have to do is call the number, let's see. And they can just leave a message, and somebody will get back to them right away.
Right on.
And that's also the same number that riders call.
Awesome. Any questions?
Do we have a link for this on our city website?
I believe we do. I do not know the answer to that, but I believe we do. If we don't, let's get one.
And then, I mean, for riders, but also for people who may want to volunteer, just go to the city website, and you can find the information.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's Mary.
Yep, take care.
Thank you.
Mr. Skolk, let's have you make an introduction. I have had the pleasure of meeting this fine individual. Travels from ALCO daily. I'm aware of these things. Former irrigation specialist. We utilize that on a daily basis here, but have at it, brother.
All right, thanks, Mayor and Council. Just want to take the opportunity to introduce our newest hire for public services. He's been here since August, beginning of August, he started. He was a replacement from somebody that did find greener pastures and moved on.
Alex Robb. Not to, I mean, not to we remember.
And so, we did, we did hire Jason Hanson, and Jason came to us in August, and he's been a great addition, and I guess I'd invite him up here and maybe kind of tell a little bit about himself.
Yeah, please do.
Let you guys ask him some questions.
Well, and I think it's good, too, and not to rain on your parade, no pun intended, irrigation guy, but we really do have a close-knit group, and I joke about Alex, but Alex is still part of the family, and I think it's really great that you take the time to come and introduce yourself, because we don't have a lot of turnover in this particular organization, and it's really good to have a face with a name and name on the face. You and I have talked offline before, and I think it's really important. So, I thank you for coming up here.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jason Hanson. Been here since August. I came from a lawn, landscape, irrigation, snow removal company. Was the operations manager for the company. So, pretty much everything that I'm doing here, I've done in the past.
Have you ever had the kind of quality leadership that you're experiencing at this particular time?
Not even close.
Nice, okay.
My goodness.
Playing the game.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, yeah, I've enjoyed my three months so far. Very, very nice people around here. Very nice to work for.
Wait till you hit a mailbox.
Yep, I was going through my snowplow route tonight, so just, you know, hopefully I don't hit anybody's mailbox, but?
Or turf their lawn.
Yes, exactly. I've snowplowed for a long time, but never in a big truck with the wing, so it'll be intriguing.
Oh, you'll get, you'll get used to it.
How's the drive from ALCO?
You know, it's not bad. 30 minutes, but I enjoy the ride.
Back roads?
My last two years working where I came from, I never left the house, which you might think is a good thing to work from home, but it wasn't. I walked downstairs to my office, and I never left there till 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. So, coming here has been a breath of fresh air.
Good.
I've enjoyed it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I will, thank you.
Don't hit a mailbox. But if you do, stop. All right, let's now move on to the public hearing. Improvement Project Supplemental, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Monroe, second by Councilmember Henry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, 6.1, 2017, Improvement Project, the supplemental assessment. Mr. Merrick is out ill this evening, so we're going to have you take over for this, Dan. Mr. Boyham, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Speaking of snowplowing, you know, when you look at this view here, the team is going to be plowing at this winter, and?
You know, it's interesting that we talk about leadership, and we, I bet we proposed three or four times to have bump outs, and former Public Works Director Schultz just absolutely abhorred the opportunity to snowplow around these, and now we have Public Services Director Skolk saying, "We love bump outs." He must not have to do a lot of the plowing. Did you hear that, Jason? Just don't hit the clock.
I wanted to go to the next slide. There we go. So, yes, our overview of our supplemental assessment hearing. The original assessment hearing for this project was held on October 2nd. And the assessment role was adopted at that meeting. Was it October 2nd, or how come I'm thinking October 16th? Yeah, it was the 2nd.
It was in October.
It was in October. And the city staff?
Can you get just a little bit closer to your microphone?
No, seriously, just sit back a little bit. You're really, really loud.
Okay. City staff conducted additional review of that original special benefit analysis that was done based on testimony at the public hearing. And in that review, there was two parcels that were identified that warranted additional consideration. The one parcel was owned by Darrell and Barbara Swanson. It's located on Broadway and has access off of Third Street. The thing that was found on that parcel was it contained a permanent easement for the levy, which affected the first special benefit analysis. The second was our municipal parking lot lot, which was originally a vacant lot when it was originally appraised, or the, sorry, excuse me, when the special benefit analysis was done. And now, that was bought by the city after that time and converted to the municipal parking lot. So, that needed to be, have additional consideration. So, what was done, the city staff contacted the appraiser who did the special benefit. There you go. Patchen, Messner, Dodd &amp; Brum, you know, it's P-M-D-A-B. And they led, led the review of the special benefit for those two properties, and as you see on this table, this is what resulted. The initial assessment for the one parcel owned by the Swansons was adjusted from $13,300 to $7,000. The city parking lot parcel was adjusted from the initial assessment, which is kind of for all residential lots, of $8,000 to $15,000. So, that's the purpose of this meeting, because you had your approval of the previous assessment role to make changes to that. You have to do it by a supplemental assessment, and there's a resolution in your packet, and staff would encourage approval of that resolution tonight. And I can open it up for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Boyham? Concerning this, anyway. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution.
We have to close it. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
By Councilmember Johnson. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mark.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 146-17, approving the supplemental assessments for the 2017 Improvement Project.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion by Councilmember Mark, and a second by Councilmember Monroe. Any further discussion? Thank you for your efforts on that, all of staff. Very patient. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Hank? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business, new business. This is important. Ms. Olness, 9.1 Solar Energy Interim Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is ordinance number 08-2017, adopting an interim ordinance. What the interim ordinance would do is effectively put a moratorium on issuing new permits related to solar energy systems, while the city did a study and proposed an ordinance amendment to your existing ordinances to address anything that's found in the study that would be done as part of that. We did receive an inquiry regarding the installation of a community solar garden on currently vacant land. That is something that is not currently addressed within your ordinances in the manner that you would typically see in other people's ordinances. And again, this would be typically in, say, a county ordinance. There are not very many solar gardens on land that is within a city. So, that's why it hasn't been addressed in your ordinance in the past. So, we would propose to complete a study. The schedule is on the screen. The study would be prepared between November and January of 2018, with the Planning Commission reviewing that in February and March, and the city council considering that study and ordinance in April. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Who do we plan on having do the study?
We would prepare the study.
Okay, all right, so we're doing that internally?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Oh, okay. Are we doing it internally through your consulting services?
Yes.
Okay.
How many hours is it going to take, about?
Thousand?
Yeah, something like that. No, we don't have an estimate for it, because it does depend on what we find out as we're getting into the study. But we would, of course, minimize it to the extent that we can.
So, it's unusual for a city to have an ordinance about solar gardens. Do others, but some other cities do?
I believe there are going to be some cities in northwestern Hennepin County that do, that have some rural land.
Yep, it's going to be a bigger issue. I think it's going to be bigger than, there's so many people against, and there's so many people for, for all kinds of reasons. I think it's going to be, I think it boils down to a legal issue between counties and cities. Do you see that, Mr. Harris, sir?
Well, yeah, and in my experience, it's not been a particularly significant issues in cities for community solar gardens. First of all, community solar gardens are relatively new, within the last three years. And the land values in and of themselves tend to mitigate against it in a city. So, it hasn't typically been on everybody's radar screen. It has been on the Met Council's radar screen, because it is one of the components that cities are supposed to analyze in their 2040 comprehensive plan.
Doesn't Watertown have a solar garden up by them?
Montrose does, just south of Montrose. It's a huge one.
I think Watertown does, too.
Outside of the corporate limits of the city, but I'm not?
One of Montrose?
No. By Montrose, I don't know. The two main ones I'm aware of in Carver County are out on 212, west of Cologne, and on 5 between Waconia and Norbert Young America.
There's one off of 25, too. As you go into Watertown.
I know this sounds terrible. I always come up County Road 10 out of Waconia. I never drive up Highway 25 into Watertown. I never go that way.
Because your parents don't live off of it?
Well, because if you're in Waconia and you're going through Watertown, you just don't drive up. You're going to go to Mayor and then hang a right?
Yeah, that's how I do it. Yeah, that's how I do it.
This is what you, this is, these are the conversations you get, Mr. Hanson. Welcome to Carver.
I'm doing my Dan imitation.
Okay. I have a number of questions.
Yeah, please. Councilmember Mark.
Um, Cindy, when you state that it's vacant land, can you help me understand? Is it, it's in the city limits? Is it a large parcel or you say community? Is it something the city owns that was, it was brought to us?
No, they're, they're called community solar gardens and that's because of sort of the subscription services that are so, associated with them where different, um, companies or people will subscribe to, um, receive solar power, but they're actually done in these community solar gardens instead. And so my understanding of it is that, um, you can subscribe to one, but then that solar garden has to be within a certain area surrounding where you are located, i.e. the county you're in or an adjacent county. So when the vacant land, the city actually has quite a bit of vacant land within the city limits and you will also have some, of course, in your urbanizing area outside of the city that's within your comp plan area. Carver County's regulations, of course, control that at this point in time, but there is some, um, interplay as well between the, um, transition area of the Carver County regulations and the city's, um, comprehensive plan and how it comes into the city.
And there's also a case pending before the Minnesota Court of Appeals concerning counties, Carver County's ordinance and a solar garden facility.
And they don't need a lot of land. They can, it depends on the size of the installation that they wanna do. Um, the one that we received the phone call about was about three and a half acres.
Okay. So I was doing a little research online about this and in Minnesota to see where they're... I know Cottage Grove and I believe Maple Grove might be going through this process right now where they're looking at putting in certain ordinances about having these solar gardens. Um, I also was looking at some that were just kind of nationaling around the country and the different types. And they were showing examples, yes, the huge ones like we're seeing on the picture here to much smaller ones that people were having in their backyard or even on their homes, which, you know, there was a time when, before, when people used to put solar panels on their house. But it was something like this, but in a much smaller scale. Um, I guess for me, anything that can get us off of our huge dependence on fossil fuels and the pollutants and toxins in our environment, um, I would say it's worth taking a really open-minded look at. Um, because per, I just think that if we can, if we can find energy in other ways, that doesn't necessarily mean it, it's a bad thing because it's a different thing and because it doesn't look like grass. Uh, some of the ordinances and, and, um, communications I was looking at online were talking about certain amount of berms or, or putting up some type of, of barriers around it, whether it's trees or, or what it might be. Obviously, if you're doing solar, you don't wanna put it right in, I know in the packet it says some things about bluffs, you're not gonna stick solar panels under trees. But if there's a way to buffer some of that, that people can have that option to do that, I guess for me, I think it's, again, a, a good idea to take an open-minded look at it.
Well, just, just for clarification purposes, um, we're not saying at all that we're for or against anything to do with, all we're saying right now is we're putting a moratorium on the issuance of any permit allowing it so that we can have a chance to study it. And all the things that you're talking about are pertinent to what we look at moving forward. Make sense?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions, concerns, comments? So just clarification, this is just a moratorium until probably April-ish, um, until a recommendation is made from a study that we're looking at from both sides of this.
I'll make a motion to adopt that ordinance, zero eight, twenty seventeen, adopting the interim ordinance concerning, um, solar gardens.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe and a second by Councilmember Henry. Uh, do we have any further discussion? Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Transit Service Agreement, right back to you, Darren Nash.
Thank you. In your packet is a copy of the second amendment to the contract between the city and Southwest Transit for Transit Services. The purpose of this amendment is to extend the agreement timeframe through the end of 2019 and to increase their compensation per service hour. They've been effectively being paid at the same rate for the past three years.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve second amendment to the contract between the city of Carver and Southwest Transit for Transit Services.
So moved.
Excitedly by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Henry. Any questions, comments, concerns? Again, thank you to Southwest Transit. Very kind. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I think I would make a motion that we, um, table the collective bargaining agreement uh, so that we can have... Are, are you prepared to talk about this?
Yep.
And Brent's fine with it? Okay, all right, I apologize. I was under the understanding. I was wrong. So to you, instead of Mr. Merrick, uh, we will have Brian Skoak present the collective bargaining agreement.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Just an overview.
Just an overview. Um, in front of you, you got the, the, uh, collective bargaining agreement that's been worked on. We did have a closed session that, uh, we did go over kind of the details with all that. Um, as we went through and it's been a while since we did that, not, nothing has really changed and there's been some language and upgrade, um, changing administrator to manager um, within the agreement. Uh, the new agreement would be a two-year agreement, um, moving forward. Um, and, uh, some of the just quick high-level things we're hitting on is shift differential, um, snow removal on-call. Um, and if you have any questions on the details of that stuff, catastrophic sick bank and trying to, to, uh, change that a little bit of the way it was, the payout was on that. Um, and then the general wage compensation with, uh, the COLA that, uh, we set in place for that. And then again, some of the, just the, uh, updates within the proposal here that we've Any parts of those you want a little bit more detail on as we get into it? Um, again, it's kind of the same and we went through, um, and how that lays out.
So everything's laid out here, the union representatives have agreed to?
Yes.
Did, they voted and it's, is it unanimous? Can you, can you answer that?
I can't answer that.
Okay, all right. But it's been approved on the union side?
Yes.
And I assume that because it's here, um, it's been, uh, agreed upon both from management as well as Brent Merrick's side?
Yep. Yeah, we had another meeting about a week ago just to kind of clarify a couple of things within it. Otherwise, that's kind of what drug it out a little bit was they had some, uh, change in their representation and getting people up to speed and kind of clarifying a few things and we got that taken care of and moving forward.
Got it.
Brian?
Please, go ahead.
Uh, I had one question and I know that we've talked about it before and I just, it's, I can't remember exactly what, um, the answer was for it. So you were capping the comp hours that they can accrue to forty hours, is that right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So during snowplow season, if they're going over, if they go above that forty, then are we paying overtime at that point?
Yeah. Yep. In the previous years, um, it's been, uh, mutually agreed upon whether or not they can comp time. Um, the last few years that we haven't allowed them to comp time just because of the vacations and stuff and we're dealing with the end of the year vacations and, um, with snowplow and having people available. So we didn't allow the comp time, just, we have a lot of vacation coming up, you know, so we kind of eliminated it. We're kind of stepping back and allowing that now. We're saying, hey, we'll allow, but up only to forty hours.
All right. So if we have large snow events all summer, budget-wise, are we gonna fall short then if we're paying overtime?
If it's in the summer, we're screwed.
Did I say summer? Well, please, don't let some snow plow in the summertime.
We're not planning for overtime and snow plowing in the-
We're plowing in the summer, we've got some-
We're plowing in the summer, we're gonna be fine with the budget. Okay.
I'd say for the summer, we let it melt.
Sorry about that, thank you. So, all right, if I could rephrase that, um, for snow plowing in the winter, if we have some really large snow events and, um, are we prepared in the budget to pay that extra overtime?
Yes. The last two years, based on the snow we did have, we did, uh, we're fine with our budgets and those salaries. We always run that risk in balancing the budget and trying to know what that snow prediction's gonna be for the year. So we do kind of have a give and take, um, overall in the budget, trying to, trying to master that or trying to juggle that around in our budget.
Yeah, quite frankly, with the money that we've saved in the last three or four years, even if we have a big year, between salt and everything else, um, it's been so mild. I, I think, uh, I think it's a wise bet. Good one. I do.
And we do have a schedule that, you know, allows-
I know. I'm knocking.
Four hundred inches of snow.
Thanks, Mayor.
I hope for a lot of snow. It's no more than that.
Brian, were the, the items here that apply to non-union folks or that could apply to non-union folks as well, like the, um, catastrophic sick bank and the comp time, those changes will be universal, right, to the non-union folks as well?
That's correct. Yep. That is, it usually applied and then it's put in the personal policy.
Not usually. It's always a-
It always apply, yeah. Correct. Thank you.
I just wanna make sure, I just, 'cause somebody will pick that.
You're, you're exactly right.
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
You're correct.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, the 2018-19 Collective Bargaining Agreement with AFSCME, Minnesota Council sixty-five, AFL-CIO, Local two-seven-eight-nine.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe and a second by Councilmember Mark. I'd also like to thank the, uh, the management team for doing a bang-up job in the negotiations that has gone so smoothly since, A, Mr. Merrick took over and then, uh, also the management team. So you guys are very much appreciated. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I saw. Any, uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Um, do you want to talk about the parks master plan or put that on hold as well?
I can cover that.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Did you kind of take, you, will somebody please on camera say, "We, we don't need Merrick anymore"?
We don't need, we don't need Merrick anymore.
Yeah. We have Skoak.
We have Skoak.
Yep. Skoak rules.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Um, before you is, uh, a park master plan study that we're proposing. Um, as the Park Commission kind of went through looking at how to move forward with the 2040 comp plan and really to plan forward for our parks and our park system throughout, not only today, but into the future and how we wanna use them. The park decided they'll really take a, a phased approach to it. Um, first being, uh, this first phase that we're proposing, it's kind of a real high-level view, looking at our park systems, really kind of laying out a map. And it really lends itself closely to what we've seen in, um, our comprehensive plan and working with that, um, working with, uh, Cindy Nash on this as well. She'll continue to work on the 2040 comp plan and really reference our park master plan, um, as being kind of how we're gonna move forward in it. Um, and as we went through this process, the, the commission did kind of, interviewed, did interview, uh, four different, uh, firms to go through this process and did select a land firm to do that. One of the other components that you'll see in there is really, as we go through the process this year, would be to really look at our park dedication fee and process and revamp that and be ready for next year's to make that, those adjustments, uh, in our park dedication. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, does anyone have any questions? Um, I've just been looking through this and I, what I didn't see was a timeframe? Tentatively scheduled for November of 2017.
Here's a timeframe.
There's a timetable.
That's, that's really cool. I didn't see that. All right. Question answered. Oh, there it is, right there. I, yeah, right there. Thank you. Uh, any other questions or concerns?
I had a couple of questions on this. And it's looking at the inventory and assessment part, so I am having a little bit of heartburn over the twenty-five thousand dollar fee that it's going to be to do this study. We are looking at some of the deliverables for it and one of them is doing inventory on the parks and things that we already have a good handle on that I feel that our own staff could take over those parts of it. Um, obviously, there's some of this, uh, that I think is, is fine for a consulting firm to take care of, but I just, some of these items that are things that can be taken care of on our own, that we may have most of it in place and just need some refreshing and updating when it comes to assessments and inventory of the parks, I think that that's amount of money that we could do on our own and have subtracted out of this contract and have our, some savings on it.
I have no comment on that particular statement.
You have a response?
Moving, I mean, we did look at that and we did actually talk to the Park Commission about doing some of that inventory. Um, to put that on our staff in the summer months and trying to do that, uh, we felt we just didn't have enough time to have and dedicate enough of it. Plus, uh, we would really like to have an independent view of what, what's the condition? How are things at? How is it laid out? Um, and really kind of have that independent approach to it. Um, there, there are definitely things that we can, uh, try to do in, in, in there, in our slow times of winter time and it's a little tough to do some of those inventories. So, uh, with the Park Commission and, uh, city staff, or, uh, public services staff, we kind of felt that having that independent was the, the right way to go. But I mean, it is definitely open for discussion and something we can talk about.
Well, I just, I've been a consultant before and it's difficult to consult on someone else's information. Your viewpoint of X might be different than my viewpoint of X and, um, if you're gonna be making recommendations and looking at a parks study in a long-term plan, you kind of wanna have apples and apples. I don't, any idea what it would save to have our own inventory put together and then, I mean, just a thought.
The inventory and assessment fee that's stated in here is eighty hours of work at seventy-six hundred dollars. So...
And I can visit with them and I'll visit with them and see if there's something that we can do. I know they were having, you know, a number, uh, three or four people come on site to go through it with their different expertise to looking at it, so I will visit with them again and see.
Uh, did we make available to them what we already had done?
Yep.
Okay.
They have our current comp, comp plan. Um, and then we did have a couple, um, of our Park Commission members go through some of the inventory stuff early on.
Mm-hmm.
And then they also had our SWAT, um, stuff that we had did, we gave them that information too, so... And they do reference a little bit of that in, in their proposal that they have, some of that-
So I wonder if their proposal, uh, the seven thousand whatever, uh, if they already took into account that they have our information and that's up in beyond that. So I don't know if, I mean, I would like you to go to them and say, "Hey, you know what? The council's having a little bit of a hard time with this.
Yep.
See, how much is this gonna cost? What can he do here?"
Yep, and I definitely will. You know, um, I think we'll ask them what we can do, uh, to try to minimize that and maybe it's, our staff goes with one or two of theirs and they take more pictures, but I'll visit with them. I'll definitely talk to them.
I know the commission was looking for a very thorough, independent, uh, observation of the condition of our parks as is. And they are gonna take into account all their research that they've done with other communities, um, so it can compare apples to apples.
How does this fit in with timing with the comp plan?
So one of the things that we, uh, working with, uh, Cindy Nash on is, is that she'll prepare the park portion of the comprehensive plan referring to our master plan. So really in that, she'll do what is required to be done as far as, uh, the, the comp plan, but referencing our, um, park master plan that we're putting together.
So Cindy, do you have some comment on how this will fit in in the timing? That this needs to, when does this need to be done for?
This doesn't need to be decided tonight, does it? If we, if we're uncomfortable with the pricing?
So, no. Um, they'll dovetail well together. Brian and I have already figured out how this would work.
Brian and I have already figured out how this would work. What's going to be in your comprehensive plan will just be the minimum of what you have to have in there from a Met Council perspective, and then this will be a separate document that kind of lives on its own. Kind of very similar to how your comprehensive plan, right now, takes a very high-level view of ideas of your 2030 comprehensive plan, takes a really high-level view of some ideas of what you wanted to see in your downtown, and then you went back later and did the downtown master plan. So, very similar in concept to that.
Good analogy.
So, will this replace the park dedication study that was done?
Ultimately, it will.
That's, if you, I mean, I'd entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to authorize an agreement with Landform to provide services for our park master plan for the amount not to exceed 24,941.
There's a motion by Councilmember Henry. I would second that motion. Motion by Webb. So, there's a motion and a second, and we can open it up for discussion. I'm okay with the cost of, I'd love to see it go down, if there's any way that, I mean, when you think about 80 hours, it's two people, two and a half days, day and a half, to really get out and take an inventory of what we are. I'd love to have that third-party initiative. I'd love to see that number reduced, but I'm not, I'd rather do this.
Well, I, I would rather see it reduced too, and so I think it's nice that Brian has offered to talk to them, and, I mean, I'll support this motion if, if staff will go to them and say, you know, not to exceed, but they're not really happy with how much it is.
Well, and we have talked about that, because, you know, it is, it is a large dollar amount, and, and the park dedication part of it, they did talk and agree to do it on an hourly basis, not to exceed that number, so they do feel that there's some pieces and parts with what we already have in place that they can use, and they feel that they can probably cut some dollars. They just weren't comfortable just saying, "Hey, we're going to do it for this" and then end up having to stop short.
Oh, I see, so they're saying it could be up to 80 hours, but not to exceed 80 hours?
Well, that's the actual comprehensive plan, that's actually 107 hours, that's on a little different part than Councilmember Mock has an issue with or is talking about, but they do talk about doing it on that hourly basis, trying to help save some of those costs if it can be done. So, again, it'd go back to staff, making sure that they get the right stuff when they need it and being available.
So, you're kind of responsible now for managing that?
Correct.
Yeah, because except for the two tasks that we were talking about, those are fixed fees. So, what were they going to reduce?
They'll reduce on their hourly for the park dedication, and I will still visit with them on doing something else with the inventory and assessment piece.
Okay.
Because if I did my math right, with the 26,000, if you, like, eight hours a day, you're looking at something like over 31 days, and that would be 31 days of someone sitting there straight, eight hours a day, working on this, and I just find it hard to believe that there's that much work. I mean, I know there's a lot, I understand there's a lot, and I want it to be good, but that is a little bit hard for me to swallow in it.
I appreciate that, but I, there will never be just one person working on it, there'll be.
So, you combine them, it's still 31 days or more of work.
When you get into the GIS work and the mapping and stuff like that, I think that detail, and especially when you bring it back to your Park Commission, there's, there's tweaks and adjustments, and they do have, you know, a meeting that will have a kickoff meeting with the Council to make sure everybody's on the same page and heading down, so they're, they're coming back and informing, and we do have one resident kind of information session in there as well. So, there is a few different things that they're coming back and they get some, some time associated with that as well, but.
You have a deciding, sorry, go right ahead. I was just going to add on to that, go right ahead.
Okay, I was just going to ask, you said you met with four different groups for this? Did you get the numbers back from all four of those groups, or just the one that was selected?
We did get numbers back on the other ones, and this one here was selected based on cost and the way they fit with the Park Commission. The Park Commission selected on workability, so they felt comfortable that they listened to them and was able to, they asked the right questions and answered them properly, and the, the Commission felt comfortable with them. Some of the other ones, they weren't quite as comfortable with them and didn't feel that they were being heard when they asked the questions.
Okay. Do you remember where the numbers?
Glenn can kick in any time here, can't he? He's really leaving you out there.
The numbers were actually all pretty, pretty close, especially the park dedication piece was probably the one variable, and the reason why I asked for the hourly is that one kind of was a little bit more of a variable. You look at the park inventory and the recommendations and analysis, that was, those were all pretty close to that, 15, 16, 18,000.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, he's very thorough.
You're welcome. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Do we need to do a, all right, roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Mock.
Nay.
Mayor Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to City Council Communications. Ms. Monroe.
I attended Carver County Leaders Meeting on October 24th, met the new Metropolitan Chair, Aline, I'm going to butcher her name and I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not, it's not easy.
I think it's Churumuff. Churumuff? Did my best, sorry, Aline.
It's not quite it, but I'm not going to claim to be able to pronounce.
We had, we had a presentation on transportation, roads, bridges, repairs, all sorts of things, what they cost. Lyndon did a wonderful job, provided us with lots of stuff. It's a little, to me, it's a little disheartening, the way we do transportation planning in Carver County. I realize there's a lot of need, but we do less of a job of prioritizing based on what is really needed, and we do projects more based on where we can get fund, when we can get funding, and what we can get funding for. So, I'll leave it at that, but.
Could I ask you a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
Just your, your commentary, do you believe that that's a state issue or a county issue, or both?
Well, the state has completely given up on building any new roads, so.
Oh, funding any, for sure.
Yes, that's what I mean, funding any new roads, which, you know, isn't a big deal for communities that are already built out, but for some communities like us, I mean, we've got a whole world out there to the west, so it's a little, yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty disheartening. But, I mean, I think the county's doing the best they can and, you know, they have a lot of information, if you're curious about what, you know, what road's going to get fixed when.
They're not in Carver.
No, no, there's a couple.
There is, yeah.
But, I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, it's interesting, we have a corridor study being done right now in Jonathan Carver Parkway, and if that comes back, that it's four lanes.
Well, and then.
Quote Lyndon, "There's no money."
Right. Yes. Yeah, so, we're going to have to get creative.
Yes, very. Thank you for, thank you for being a part of that, by the way.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure. Oh, and I just wanted to remind everyone that this Sunday is the Carver's, Carver Lions' brunch out at Sticks Tavern at Dahlgreen. I can't remember the exact times, but it's like in the morning till the early afternoon.
I think it's 9:01.
You're correct, that's correct, Cindy. Yeah. And I encourage everyone to come, the food is fantastic.
When should we be there?
In the morning.
To lunch.
To lunch.
My lunch time. All right. Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
That's all I have.
Ms. Johnson?
Since our last meeting, we had a Carver Business Council meeting where we went through an update on City Hall planning and then talked about the downtown improvement project. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Mock?
At our last Lions' meeting, Jim Wigan, who's part of the Carver and the Minnesota, came to the meeting and asked us if we, not only would some of the Lions want to volunteer, but around town for, we're going to be doing a holiday light display down at the gazebo park. So, it's going to be, there's Carver and the Minnesota involved, the Lions are involved, Funky Minds, and then a handful of residents also. We are going to be having a tree lighting ceremony, and we'll be decorating. We are looking at different things. We were hoping to get even a horse and buggy, but we might, with the dates, it might not work out. So, we're looking at really fun things to do down there. Funky Minds, I was at their meeting on Wednesday, and we brought them some ornaments to decorate, so they did that, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be really neat, it's going to look great down there, and it's just a lot of different groups and people from town who are putting it together.
Do you have the date for that yet, or is that still?
So, at the next meeting, I'll come, we're just, we're, we're throwing together all the plans here, and we've thrown a couple other dates around, there might have been one decided, and it's in my email right now.
Okay.
They're meeting right now, so I can't be there. But, at the next council meeting, I'll have more information for everyone.
Do you remember the time?
Lunch-ish.
Lunch-ish.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be when it's dark out.
Sundial. That's it?
That is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hank?
Nothing.
Brian, do you have anything you'd like to add as our new city manager?
No, I got nothing, thank you.
I have been asked to present at the Brookings Institute in Chicago on affordable housing and how it ties and the political ramifications of, tied to economic development. Airfare and hotel are covered, but other incidentals are not, and I will be not putting in for reimbursement, because I think it's that important to get our message out there for what we went through and have that be a part of it. So, if anybody has any questions or wants to talk about it, I'll be available until next Monday. I have nothing. It's next Monday, the 13th. So, I go to, there's a Regional Council of Mayors meeting downtown, and then I'll go[1767.91]